Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council order. I will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
Councilman Hart is absent, excused. Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Pro Tem Sampi absent, excused. Council President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is not present.
Okay, so just want to give a little explanation about quorum and what that means for this meeting. A quorum is when there are four or more individuals on this body present to conduct the business of the meeting. Unfortunately, without a quorum, we cannot conduct the business of this meeting for you all as residents. That means we cannot take any votes tonight. We cannot deliberate on any items that you see on the agenda as well. The only things that we can do and we will do tonight are discussion of the vouchers. We cannot vote on the vouchers or hold a vote. We can have a council discussion, but not on the agenda items, and then we can have time at the end for public comment. So I know you're used to having two points on the agenda with which to talk, one on the agenda items only, and another for a public comment. There will only be this evening one spot to talk on public comment with your usual three-minute allotment of time. So with that, I will entertain any discussion from my colleagues on the vouchers? If there's any discussion on the vouchers? Okay, I have no discussion on the vouchers either. We will now move on to comments from the administration, if they have any. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. We will now move on to public comment first, and then we'll move on to comments from the administration. Is there anyone on my left, public comment, wishing to speak? Ms. Wilson.
Good evening, council members who really care to be here. Appreciate it. My question is, if you can't do the vouchers, how do you pay your bills? How are you planning on paying your bills?
That will be at the next meeting when we are able to vote on the vouchers.
So if you have people who actually work for the city, under the city, like Family Neighborhood Services and things like that, these people are going to go without a check. Am I correct?
Right, it depends on if we have a quorum at the next meeting or not, so.
These vouchers that you're discussing right now, they're for the last two weeks? Or they're for the two weeks coming?
The vouchers are for the weeks coming and things we have to pay.
I'm talking about the time period.
The time period of the vouchers are between the two, yes, they're between two weeks between the meetings.
So these people will not get paid. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak? Mr. Prue.
Edward Prue here. Ms. Wilson brought up a great point because we have three council members here right now. Prior to the February 14th attempt to overturn the veto, there was discussion behind the scenes that there was a plan to stall the government if indeed the veto was not overturned. After that date, when it was not overturned, the plan began to be implemented. I kind of thought to quote Judge Judy, and one of the things she says is, "I'm not here because I'm beautiful." But the other piece she says is, "I don't believe in coincidences." We often have, if there is anybody that is absent, it's one, and we understand that. It happens. Life happens. But to have three, which are three of the people who are very disappointed that their path did not go forward, not being here at this meeting is disturbing. Not only do we have bills that need to be paid, fire and police have things on the vouchers, we have different contracts that need to be done. This is stopping the government from working. The people did not elect government officials, and again, thank you all for being here, to neglect their duties for selfish reasons. This is self-serving, what we're seeing here today. Now, do we believe that there are some, or maybe one, reason our council members not here legitimately? Could be. But perception is bad. We have community members here wanting to see the government work, wanting to see the government move forward, and we have three committed council members here. Elected officials are here to do the business of the city so that the will of the people goes forward. And for the will of the people to go forward, we must have them here. We've seen time and time again where one council member cries when the situation gets tough. We have other council members who give pity party excuses as to why they want certain things to go forward. But at the end of the day, it's not about any particular person except the people. And we are seeing obstruction right here and now. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, ma'am, hold on. We were calling people on the left. We'll get you in one second. Is there anyone else on my left wishing to speak? It's there. Yes. Yep.
Ruth Dale. Good evening, everyone. At the February 5th council meeting, which I attended, I wanted to thank council president for indulging me on my actions here in the aisle way to try to find a person to read the marker text. And I'm thankful you didn't give me the gavel. Thank you. This is pitiful. These council people were, because you all represent me. I'm very, well, can't say the word I was going to say. I would, personally, I would like to see all of my council people vote independent, and I don't see that all the time. A lot of times, I would like to see independent voting. And I don't, I'm not always here but to watch every council meeting. I rarely miss watching any if I'm not here. I was unaware of the February 14th meeting, but I did watch it on YouTube, and I've had nine or 10 people call, or one of them came over and talked to me about it. Six of those people, interestingly, all said that the council needs to get along with each other in order to accomplish things. I agree. Three of the people said that the council needs to fix the 1966 city charter. Thank you. Thank you all that did come tonight.
Thank you, Ruth Dale. Anyone on my right? Ma'am?
Hi, Cynthia Cross. This is my first meeting, so I didn't know about the left-right thing. And my issue's kind of easy here. It's about the dog park. The gate isn't closing correctly, and there's been a couple of times when I went, especially the inside gate, it's not locking at all. I mean, it won't close because it's scraping against the ground. And also, so it needs to be fixed. And also, I kind of got an issue with, every time I go, somebody's dog poops in the dog park and they're not picking it up. So there needs to be something done. Find, you know, find out who they are. You've got cameras. You can't look and find out who's letting their dog poop and not pick it up so they can get fined or banned from the dog park? Because every time I go, there's pooping. You know, it's not my job to pick up somebody else's dog poop. But that's it. Dog park. I love it.
Thank you, ma'am, and we will get your questions over to our Parks and Rec Director as well, Kyle Mulligan.
Okay, thank you, Kyle.
Public comment. Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
I'm new to this, too. So my comments are to the council, but mainly to the police officer. Last year, I complained about Avondale and the school where they park all down Avondale in front of Hamilton, yes. You guys were nice enough to put signs up. I counted. You guys put six signs up for it, and you might as well take them down because they still park there. It says, "No stopping, standing, or parking." From 7:30 to 4:30, school days only. And yet, when you're driving down there, you can, it's one car lets the other car through. Two cars can't get through. I've sent letters to the school saying, "Why don't you send letters out saying, you know, it's illegal to park there? They're going to start ticketing?" I got nowhere with that either. So I'm asking you, at school time, go down there and start threatening the first time, "We're going to get tickets," and if they don't do that, then start putting tickets out. I'd appreciate that.
Wait, the stop sign.
Oh, and the stop sign. They, legally, they're supposed to be 30 feet away from a stop sign, and they park all the way up to the corner at the stop sign. So now you don't know if they're parked there or they're getting ready to turn, so you're kind of stuck. And even if you turn onto easily going into where I live, there's usually somebody right at that stop sign, too. So I'd appreciate it if you could do something about that. The other thing is, we've talked to every person that came to our house when you guys were trying to get votes about water accumulating at the end of our driveway, and everyone that came trying to get votes said, "Oh, yeah, we'll look into it." Nobody has, and it's still there. So I'd like somebody to come out to my house. I'm not going to announce my address now, but whoever I need to talk to, and come out and see what you can do about that water. Because now it goes from water to ice. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am? Ma'am, at the end of this session, if you'll give me your contact info, I'll look into the issue with the water at the street.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, too, the chair, if I may. We're working at, looking at different strategies. In fact, Sergeant Neville's here also. That's common with every school. Sergeant Parrish of the Traffic Bureau's got people assigned at different schools every day. We still have a, believe it or not, good traffic, or run volume at those hours, both the morning and at night. All I can really give you is a bad excuse, saying we're everywhere at every school, and we just kind of have to prioritize what we, if we're at Hamilton, the next week we're at John Glenn, or we're at a different school. It is a very common thing. The schools are very helpful with us sending out letters. We did a lot of compliance first, but it has gotten to the point of tickets because some of the feedback we're getting from the parents are, you know, kind of whatever. "I'm here for five minutes. Leave me alone." The repeat, those are the ones that are starting to get the tickets. The, when you correct them, we're there for, you know, three days in a row and kind of sending everybody on their way, and then when we come back, it's starting to get into tickets. But I am still working on some different strategies to make this more efficient.
Can I waste one more time?
Unfortunately, your time is up, and that, we'll come and talk to you after the meeting.
I'll toss you after.
Sorry, ma'am. Is there anyone else on my left, public comment? James.
Adam Hammond. As I walked in here tonight and saw that three of our council members weren't here, I was extremely disappointed. I know that there's been a lot back and forth with regards to the appointment and the veto that went on, but in the 10 years that I served on council, not one time did we not have a quorum, and I threw the chair to City Clerk LeBlanc. I don't know if you ever never had a quorum, or threw the chair to Deputy Mayor, never had a quorum. So it's a slap in the face to us as residents. It's disrespectful to the seat. It's unfortunate, and it's unfair. There are people that are sitting in this room that would love to have a chance to sit in one of those seats. And I think tonight, again, they showed disrespect for the seat, for our residents, for our community and our city. I'm really, really disappointed. I want to thank the three council members that came out tonight. I want to thank our residents. I know there's still individuals that have put their name in, that are looking for the, you know, to be appointed to the seat, but this is disappointing. This has turned into a circus, and it's a slap in the face to our community. It's a slap in the face to this seat, and there should be very, very good explanation as to why these three council members are not here. Beyond that, they need to be held accountable for not being here. I don't think it's fair that we're playing games with government, with our council seats, with the city business, with the nomination of individuals that were trying to serve to help our community out. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Public comment. Anyone else on my right? Yes, sir.
Patrick Groh. Last Wednesday, when you had a special council meeting, I picked, you picked a starting time for 6 o'clock, which are normal starting times. The council meetings start at 7:00. So when I heard about it that day, I assumed it started at 7:00. So I mishap the meeting of the, of course, and I don't blame the council for the starting time. I should have done my due diligence. I showed up at the meeting just before the vote, and after the vote was taken, I heard several times from the council how disappointed they were at the outcome and saying several times, "I do not know how to proceed." I also heard from the council, "They did not understand how we have 2/3rds vote to nominate a candidate, but we do not have 2/3rds vote to overturn the veto." So let's look at the situation. Council appoints a candidate, mayor vetoes it, which he has a right according to the charter. The council has a right, according to the charter, to overturn the veto with five votes. So now we have council members disappointed and don't know how to proceed and are amazed at people that change their minds. We all have changed things, and it starts with the changing of our minds. So I'd like to leave the council with a prayer. I pray that God would bless this council and that they would give them the serenity to change, to accept the things that cannot change and to change, and have the courage to change the things that can and have the wisdom to know the difference. I pray that God would bless this council, that God would bless the city, the mayor and his administration, and God bless the city of Westland. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Yes, sir.
I wasn't prepared to speak here. Vincent Harvey, City Westland resident. Learning everything that's been going on for the past couple of weeks with the appointment of the city council vacancy and whatnot, and then showing up here tonight, like everyone is shocked to see that three council members decided not to show, which is pretty pitiful in city government. I've worked for a city government for 31 years and just retired. And in my service in, with municipal service, this is quite unheard of. One thing I'd like to know is if there's anything, if later on, as time goes on from this point, and if it's found out that these three individuals came here or didn't show up out of retaliation for the decision that was made last week, is there anything that could be done in the power of this council to do anything to the individuals, sanction, or anything for disciplinary, for actually taking upon themselves to cripple the activities of the city government and their duties? Just, I just figured, throw that out there, see if there's anything that could be done or explanation publicly about with these three individuals for not showing, for not showing up.
I can address that during my council comments tonight. I can address that question.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak? Public comment. Anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everybody. My name is Deborah Porter, and I have been a Westland resident for over 20 years. I don't normally come to these meetings, and, but I'd like to start coming, and I'm finding the comments this evening very interesting, very interesting. I have a couple of things that I'd like to know. First of all, since I've been in the city of Westland, we do not have an updated, like, recreation center where kids can go play basketball, go swimming, and things like that, and I see them in other cities, and they're much nicer, right? So I've always taken my son to those places, and he is, he's 20, he's 23 now, you know, so 20-something years we've gone without having these new facilities in my city, you know. So with us going to, you know, other cities in order to have those amenities available to us, we pay more, right? We pay a fee because we're outside the city. So my question is, is there any plans for the city of Westland to build or renovate a building or anything where we can have a recreational facility for our residents as well as, you know, the children in the neighborhood?
I'd be happy to address that during my council comments as well, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And then my second comment this evening. I am a recent absentee ballot voter, okay, and so I dropped mine off, you know, here. Oh, that's what I plan to do. I've done it before, and that's how I vote. And even just registering to get that absentee ballot, or ballot. So I received mine, you know, in a very timely fashion this year. My neighbor who's sitting over here, her name is Kathy. She lives across the street from me. She submitted hers, and she did not get one, okay? And it's just by coincidence that we were talking, and I mentioned to her that, you know, I had mine. So she did call the city, you know, and she talked to someone, and she was able to come in and vote. So my question is, when things like that happen, when a ballot does not reach a resident, what is done afterwards to ensure that it doesn't happen again? Because I would imagine that if it happened to her, it could happen to someone else.
Thank you. We can have the city clerk can address that for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
An hour later.
Is there anyone else on my left, public comment? Anyone else on my right, public comment? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will post public comment and move on to comments from the administration.
Thanks, Council President. City offices, including the William P. Faust Library and the 18th District Court, will be closed on Tuesday, February 27th, for the presidential primary election. There is no delay in trash or recycling pickup, so you can go ahead and put your trash and recycling out as normal on that day. Priority waste is working. Mayor Coleman's listening tour will be making its next stop at the William P. Faust Library on Monday, February 26th, at 6:00 p.m. Residents will have the opportunity to participate in conversation with the mayor and several members of the city administration. There'll be more dates in the spring and summer, so keep your eye out for those coming up. The, finally, the winter tax bills are due on February 29th. Please know that no payments will be accepted at City Hall after this date. Payments then have to be made down at Wayne County. So again, that's February 29th here, or you can go down to the county after that with a penalty. So thanks. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any comments from the city attorney's office this evening?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
And Mr. Clerk, if you wanted to address the question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm pleased to offer a comment regarding absentee ballots because this election presents interesting challenges that occur once every four years. Every four years, per state law, absentee voters, as well as people who choose to early vote or vote in a precinct, must select a ballot style. For this election, there's two styles, Democrat, Republican. And what we have experienced is that out of approximately 26,000 absentee voters, there are 18,000 voters who either chose to not submit their absentee ballot application or they submitted it without designation of which ballot they can legally receive. So because of laws that became effective legally February 13th, literally, last week, but were encouraged to be complied with in December, my office but were encouraged to be complied with in December, my office sent to residents who fell within those categories, a postcard that indicated, "You must, by law, select a ballot style if you wish to receive a ballot." That, in turn, produced about another 1,000 responses. We were then required to do it again. We were also required by state law to attempt to make a telephone call if a phone number was available for the voter, and/or send an email if an email address was available to the voter. We complied with the law in all ways, but there's one element that we simply have no control over, and I am not casting stones or anything similar to that. However, we put ballots in the mail. Whether they reach their intended destination or not is not controlled by our office. There have been instances where the post office has notified voters and/or has notified our office that something happened, and that the ballot did not reach its intended target. On top of that, believe it or not, there was also a change that was implemented through Proposal 2 of 2022 that related to the state system. We rely on the state database for everything we do. We don't have a database. Our communities are not charged with that responsibility. It rests with the state. We became aware about, two weeks ago, that the state system did have a coding error that if certain mechanics took place, voters were removed from what is called the permanent ballot list. There are many of us out there, myself included, that are part of the permanent ballot list. And what that means is, I no longer have to submit an application, except once every four years, to designate my ballot choice. But, aside from that, an application will no longer be required if I checkmark that box. We learned about two weeks ago, I personally received a call from the state notifying me, just like other clerks did, that hundreds and hundreds of people within their database who reside in our community and others were mistakenly removed off the permanent ballot list. So, we did what we could in terms of re-contacting these folks to make things right to the extent that we could in our office. It's very likely that there are outliers out there, and in fact, your neighbor, ma'am, may be one of those. We have encouraged folks in the past, I mean, through our messages from our office, through PSAs that have been done in the past, through everyday conversation, that if you are an absentee voter, and you don't receive your ballot within about 35 days of the election, that means something could be wrong, and we ask that you contact us so we can make it right. We want you to vote. We send ballots out on approximately the 40th day before every election, provided we actually have those ballots printed in, in our hands. And to date, that has happened on every election. But the good news is that we're hearing about this situation today with six voting days before Election Day, and five of those days involve early voting, which occurs right here in City Hall, 8:30 AM tomorrow, Wednesday, through 4:30 PM each day through Sunday. If a registered voter comes here, we will process them. They can vote right here, so long as they have not already voted. Because two, two people today, for example, came here to early vote. The system, and we have at least one of our election officials in the audience here today and can attest to this, but two people came today to vote, and it turns out that the system, in real time, notifies our election officials they already received a ballot. So the instruction is, before they process the voter, they have to call the clerk's office, which at that point was about 100 feet away, and learn that those two voters, actually, not only did they receive their ballots, they actually returned them already, too. They say it was innocent, they didn't mean to try to vote twice, but the system works. So whether by telephone to my office tomorrow, by personal visit to either my office or early voting tomorrow, we will make sure that you and other people who find themselves in a similar spot, or who wish to vote in advance of Voting Day, can do so right here, and I hope that you do that. And I'd be pleased to stay after for a few moments to respond to any other questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now begin council comments this evening with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I'm just as shocked as I think everybody in the room. You know, I've been on this council a while, I've been attending meetings for a lot of years before I was here. I've seen a lot of infighting, seen a lot of things happen, but I've never seen, you know, an orchestrated attempt for multiple council members not to just show up. So it's really a terrible thing, it's embarrassing for our city. I want to thank the residents that came today to share their issues, whether it was the dog park, or the flooding at the street, or there's a couple of other issues. Thanks for coming and bringing those to our attention, and we're going to make sure that those get addressed. There was one question asked, "Does the charter allow us to do anything about this?" Unfortunately, no. This, this has to go on for at least 90 days before the charter allows us to take action against those council members. I don't anticipate, anticipate that happening, but I do believe that this isn't over today. This is going to continue for a while. It seems like, you know, that they want to make their appointment, they didn't get their way, and, you know, this is the response to that. So, thank you for all the candidates. There's a lot of candidates here in the audience that were looking to be appointed. Thank you for being here as well. For now, that's it for me. Thank you.
We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you. I do share, thank you for coming tonight. I, being the newest member right now on this council, I, I'm, I'm disappointed. As I said when I was first, at my, the first time I had the inauguration, is that, when I, I don't know if everyone heard the story, if you saw it, but when I went into Meyer after the, after the election, and I thought, I mean, I've been going to Meyer for a long time, but that day, when I went in there, I was like, "I serve these people. Every one of these people, I get to, I get to go serve them. I get to sit up on this dais, and whether I make a right decision or I make a wrong decision, I'm serving every single one of them." I can't even tell you what I felt thinking about that. And then to, and then to not have a quorum tonight on a regular meeting, a regular meeting. This is not a special meeting, this is a regular meeting. I, I'm not one, I'm, I'm really careful in how I talk about things, but this is disappointing to me. I do have to share that, and I just want to share that I, you know, with, with the other people that have stepped up and said how disappointed they are, I do share that because you can't, the first thing I, even when I called Council President, when I heard, you know, that this might happen, that's the first, the first thing I thought of was vouchers. Like, we can't even pay these vouchers. That's the very first thing I thought of. There's other things, too. People can't take, there's appointments that we're supposed to be having, there was other business that was supposed to take place. But to not be able to pay your bills because you don't have a quorum, really discouraging. So I think I'll leave it there with that. I do want to thank everyone for, again, for talking, and I, yes, I'm hearing the things that will get taken care of with all the concerns, dog pot, water. So again, I just want to thank you for that, and I, I do look forward to the next meeting in two weeks, when I hope we can make some nominations for the appointment again. And I, I don't know, I won't predict the future at all, I won't even try. So I just, I hope people will continue to come and support us in this process, and voice your thoughts. I mean, if you, please voice concern, voice thoughts. Share email is, everyone is their first initial, last name, E. Bowman for me, at cityofwestland.com, or you can reach me at 734-224-3679. I think that's my number, sorry. If it's not, it's on the webpage. So just, by all means, reach out. And I'll be happy to meet, too. I am open to meeting people and things like that, so don't ever worry about that. I will make time. So I appreciate, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. First off, I want to thank you all for coming tonight at tonight's meeting. Thank you for being here. I know that you expected us to conduct business on your behalf and vote on things on your behalf, and we were not able to fulfill that, and it's rather embarrassing. But thank you all for coming out here and attending the meeting. Thank you to the residents who brought issues up. To the resident on Avondale by Hamilton, if you can please stay after, we'll get your information and capture your address. I know we don't want to shout that out to the public, so we'll, we'll come and get that from you. The question that was asked in regards to what we can do in terms of the absence, as Councilman Hersberg said, there's nothing that we can really do at this time, and when people are absent and excused, the charter does provide for them to be absent-excused from a meeting, which is different than absent unexcused, which would be if they didn't tell us that they're, you know, not coming to the meeting and just didn't show up. There was a point made on the rec center, so a couple of things about that. We did have a deliberation a couple of years ago regarding turning the old Marshall Upper Elementary School into a rec center. That unfortunately fell through and didn't work out. What was also equally disappointing is we didn't kind of have a side discussion or conversation about building a ground-up rec center. I know some of us on council at the time wanted to have that discussion. Unfortunately, we spent almost an entire year just digging into Marshall, and something that the YMCA, who we were going to potentially partner with on that, ultimately wasn't going to come to the table with any more than $500,000, and really wasn't going to commit to any manpower or, you know, maintaining the, the buildings and the structure itself of the Marshall School. So it would have been nice to pivot from that at some point and have a discussion on a ground-up rec center, to talk about using some of that, your taxpayer ARBA money on that, but unfortunately, we didn't have that discussion, and we spent an entire year going down the rabbit hole of Marshall just to watch it not work out in the end. With that, boy, this is an odd situation to be in, and a frustrating and disappointing situation to be in. If you need anything from me, you can always call me, you can text me on my cell phone at 734-890-2146. As my colleague said, our first, initial of our first name and our last name is our email address, mmcdermit@cityofwestland.com is how you can email me. I certainly hope that we have a quorum at the next meeting so we can move beyond, get the business for the residents done, have a vote to fill the vacant seat on council, and ultimately take care of business. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.